Thank you for coming to our public discussion on the calendar for the 2014-15 school year. I'm Meredith Libby and just want to give you a rundown of what we'll be doing this evening. We promised you a meeting from 5:00 to 6:30. We're going to start with a presentation from Larry Collier, who is our expert on all things calendars and who has worked with a committee to develop some calendar proposals to be recommended to the Board of Education. We will hear from Dr. Register and we'll also have an opportunity for comments and questions. We have a small group tonight, so I hope we can get -- hear from everybody. But I've handed out some cards and pens, so if you have thoughts that you want to jot down, well, Mr. Collier is presenting, we can collect those, we can answer questions that way, or if you're camera shy and don't want to ask, we'll do that. If you do want to make a comment, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I have a bell and I really hate the bell, so please don't make me use the bell. But we look forward to a good discussion this evening. And with that, Larry, do you want to begin?
Before I get into the real details of our calendars, I wanted to explain a little bit about how our calendar committee works. We, every year for decades, have had a calendar committee made up of teachers, principals, parents, and central office staff. So what I'm presenting to you tonight are two calendars that the committee voted yes on as options, and one calendar that the committee voted against. Those of you in the audience, you have a handout of the two calendars that the committee voted to consider. The first calendar is a balanced calendar with intercession or two-week breaks. Intercessions, we've had some funding issues that Dr. Register will talk about, that the funding didn't come through like we had planned. So whether we have an intercession or not, there'll be two weeks in the fall, two weeks in the spring. Hopefully, if the funding is there, we'll have intercession on the first four days, which is hopefully cost neutral. There'll be five days then following those intercessions for fall and spring breaks, 175 instructional days, five teacher planning days, those -- oh, those are the -- okay, I'm sorry. Five teacher planning or professional development days and five days for inclement weather. So the first calendar, we would start -- our charge has been to begin school no earlier than August 1st and to end by the end of May. So those of you in the audience, you have the entire calendar. We condensed it on the screen so that we're showing in basically three-month increments so the viewing public can see it. So July 28th through the 31st are four teacher in-service days. The State Department requires five, so the first four would be on those four dates. School would start August 1st, which is a Friday, that would be a half-day. Now, in the last several years, school starts, we have the half-day, and then we have a day off. Those days are because so many hundreds and hundreds of children show up at schools unexpectedly. They moved over the summer, they didn't pre-register, so they show up, or people that have moved in from out of town did not pre-register. It takes time to enter, register all those children, get them entered into the student management system, get them a schedule. This year in 2014, the problem is that August 7th is a primary election day. We try very hard not to have school days, instructional days, on these election days. Some of our schools are really hurting for parking, and it's hard enough to have a teacher in-service or planning day and still have voting there. So instead of having August 1st off, or start school on August 1st and August 4th off, we've moved that to August 7th, which may be a little awkward, but we didn't want to have two off-days that week. The first quarter would end October 3rd, intercession from October 6th through 9th, then the fall break, and teachers would report back for Planning Day October 17th. That's a little bit of a change in what we've done this past year and what's planned for this year. The Planning Day for teachers was this past year, I think, and I know it is for this coming year, would have fallen on October 6th. The feeling of the committee was we may be hurting ourselves with intercession by not having August, October 6th as the first day of intercession. So that's why we moved the Planning Day to the 17th. So the second quarter would then begin on October 20th and go through December 19th. That is our first semester. Going into January, again, it's pretty much the same as it was this past year and will be this coming year, intercession, April, March 24th through 27th. Now, you'll see we got the Planning Day on that Monday, but we couldn't have intercession on April, I mean, the Planning Day on April 3rd because that's a spring holiday. That's Good Friday, and it's just not a day that would work for a Planning Day. And then school would be out May 28th for children, teachers, May 29th with their last, their fifth in-service day. So that's option one. Now, the next calendar has more school days in it. We've increased by 10 the number, or increased by nine the number of days for teachers. Four of those days would be for professional development, five would be instructional days. There is a cost to this of approximately $20 million. We would maintain the fall and spring breaks but would not have an intercession in either fall or the spring, and there would be five days built in for inclement weather. In this scenario, the days shown in blue would be the locally funded professional development days. So we have on this scenario July 25th as being the first locally funded professional development day, then the four in-service days, just like the previous calendar, and then you see one week of fall break, October 6th through October 10th. In November, and I forgot to mention this on the previous calendar, on the previous calendar, November 4th would be Parent Conference Day. That is the state general election on that day, governors' race, state legislators, and so forth. What we've done on this second calendar is move the conference day to October, I'm sorry, November 3rd so that we wouldn't have a lot of parents coming to the building on Election Day and taking up a lot of parking spaces. Instead, we would have November 4th as a locally funded professional development day with the semester ending December 19th. School would begin for the second semester on January 6th for students, Planning and Assessment Day on January 5th. Then we've got in February, February 16th is President's Day. We've had that as a professional development day for several years. We would follow that up with another professional development day, a locally funded day that we've added to the calendar. Spring break would be the one week of March 30th through April 3rd. As with the other calendar, school would end on May 28th for children and May 29th for teachers. Now, the, a more traditional calendar that the committee looked at and discussed included 175 days of instruction, beginning on August the 6th. That would be a Wednesday, you can see that in your handout. You don't have that calendar, but you can follow along. And school would end on May 21st, the Thursday before Memorial Day. Last day for teachers would be Friday before Memorial Day. This was voted against in the calendar committee, as I've already mentioned. We can show the traditional. Well, as I mentioned, the calendar committee is made up of three parents, I'm not sure how many teachers, I think an elementary, middle, and high school principal, and then central office people. The calendar committee looked at this, there were several points of discussion, one being the balanced calendar, one of the main purposes of that was to shorten the summer to decrease summer loss. If we add two more weeks in the summer, then we've already made the decision after one year that we're not going to do that anymore. So there were other discussions, and off the top of my head, I'm not remembering exactly what the, but Dr. Register will get more into that in a minute. But you can see on the screen the layout of the days in the traditional calendar with one week of fall break, again, October 6th through 10th, Parent Conference Day, November 4th, first semester ending December 19th. The second semester, pretty much the same with one week of spring break, school ending May 21st for students, May 22nd for teachers. Those are the calendar options, and again, the traditional calendar was not, one other thing I will say about a traditional calendar, if we start any later than August 6th, then we're going to have to cut into fall break or eliminate it, depending on how much later you want to start. So those are the calendar options discussed by the committee, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Register.
Thanks, Larry. Good afternoon. Glad to have all of you here. Look forward to hearing some comments from you. I just want to give you some of the conversation that we've had and some of the reasons why we're having this meeting today and why we're having the conversation. We decided in June to delay a presentation of a calendar, a recommendation to the Board of Education. Let me recognize three board members who are here, Anna Shepherd, Joanne Brannan, and Jill Spearing. Thank you for being here today. Glad to have you. Because we know that it's always a little bit awkward when you're approving a calendar a year in advance. We're talking about year after next. We've had the balanced calendar for one year, and the, I think the verdict's still out on that. It is in many people's minds. Some people, some people have made up their mind for and some people have made up their mind against, but we really can't say, here's definitive information that says we ought to do it this way or we ought not to do it this way. So we decided to take a longer period of time to really gather input before we make recommendation to the Board of Education next month. The balanced calendar, as I have said, has only been used one year. We're finishing that up. We were disappointed in some respects. When we originally approved the balanced calendar, we thought we were going to have quite a bit more federal money to provide programming in the intercessions. Our goal was to serve 20,000 students or more. Actually, this year with a cutback in funding, we served about 7,500 students in the intercession. Balanced calendar has a number of characteristics that we were interested in. Intercession is only one of those. So that's a disappointment, but that's only one disappointment as we look at other reasons why we support or don't support that calendar. There are a number, and I'll say to you, and obviously from hearing some of you ask questions already, there are some of you who want to return to a balanced calendar, and that's what we're here to hear. That's what we're about today, a traditional calendar. That's what we're, that's what we're here to talk about, to hear what you have to say and to consider that input. We're also going to do the telephone call-out. And this, we're planning this, the first week of school, our calendar committee recommended that we wait until children were back in school. That way we'll get a higher percentage of answers, if you will, and responses when we, when we talk to parents. We also have an online site where you can let us know what you think about this. There are, I personally support the balanced calendar, and I want to give you a couple of the reasons why, and then we'll talk about some negatives for that and hear from you too. The first reason to support is to have shorter, shorter summer break, eight weeks instead of 10, basically. We know that for certain populations, the longer the break, the more the loss of learning, particularly for the English learners. We have a third of all the English learners in Tennessee, and when children go home and don't speak English for a long period of time, they regress in learning the English language, and that's, that's critical to us. And a shorter break with longer breaks in the fall and spring is a positive for that. Also for economically disadvantaged students. There aren't many summer programs for children in Davidson County, not nearly as many as there need to be. And when a lot of our children are out and alone at home for long periods of time, that's a negative. And so, so spreading out that calendar a little bit, reducing that summer time off a little bit is perceived as being positive for those groups of children. Also for students with disabilities. So that's one of the considerations that we, that we've given. The balanced calendar that we're proposing with or without intercession is also a framework for what I would really like to see us be able to adopt, and that's a longer school year. There's not much question that more time generates a higher level of learning. You can argue the pros and cons of just spreading out a calendar, but you can't argue too much. The research is much more definitive, that more time generates a higher level of learning. And we, we support going to a longer school year, and that's taking what is intercession time and using that as instructional time, and increasing our number of days for students to 184 days. In Tennessee, we fudge on that. The state law says we go to school 180 days. We don't have enough time in the teacher work year to do everything that we have to do and without infringing on full days of school. So we actually use bank time, and you, and as our calendar shows, we go to school 175 days instead of 180 days. We'd like to extend that time and I think result in better, better learning. The difference, the difference in time, and to simplify a little bit what Larry was saying, and Larry can answer a lot of details about the question, but essentially what you're doing with balance as opposed to traditional is changing an August 1st start date to an August 6th start date and changing an end date from May 28th to May 22nd. And that would cut a week out of fall break and a week out of spring break. So that's, that's pretty much where we are with it now. We know that this year in our I-zone schools, the schools that serve, that are low-performing schools, the I-zone director, Alan Coverstone, is adding eight days of school. All children in those schools, that's about 3,100 students, will have eight additional days of school, and that's funded through school improvement grants. That's possible because of a spread calendar and intercessions. Those children will go to school, it will be required days for them to go to school. That's, that's a, that's a good change for us. We also have talked to a lot of our partners. We had good support this year from YMCA's and other organizations in providing intercession. We think that'll grow, good opportunities for kids to go to special programs in the intercession and feel like that's a positive. I'm going to stop now. We plan to do this in a short period of time, about 20 minutes, and recognize you. There aren't that many of you here. We want to hear from everyone, and so we'll just ask you to use the mic there, and you're welcome to make comments or ask questions, and Larry will help me answer the specifics of the questions. So please come up and let us know what you think and let us answer your questions.
Good evening, Dr. Register. Thank you for all the work that you've done.
May I ask you to give us your name, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
Sandy Jones. I'm from Antioch. My children have attended JFK, Thomas Edison, and MLK High School. I see a few problems with the balanced calendar. One, it will exacerbate the problem of youth unemployment because if, I know that's a small thing, but if a teenager has three months that they can work at a job, that increases the amount of money they can save for college, for instance. Another reason I do, I personally am against the balanced calendar, I think it provides more opportunities for knowledge loss with the two-week breaks because we get three of those rather than one, you know, because of a longer summer. So to me, I don't see how that really, if kids are learning Algebra II, why would you stop for two weeks, have them take a break, and then come back? It's like you're losing your momentum. And, I mean, that's, that's just my opinion. But I think if you have children that need the intercession, then have it in August. You know, start them early in August. But I don't think that all the children in Davidson County should be, you know, everything about their school year should be catered to ESL learners, even though they have needs, or just basis, based on the needs of impoverished children. I think you can address that in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, I'm Greta Williams-Hopper. I'm a teacher at Apollo Middle School. I teach sixth grade literacy, and I'd like to build upon some of the comments that were made. I also felt a loss of momentum. Personally, I don't need the break in the fall. I would like to keep going and teaching children. I do understand the needs of particular populations. If indeed we were to be able to find $20 million, could we not fund some quality summer programs for students that don't have other options? And I have to say that I'm in favor of the traditional calendar also, maybe by virtue of my advanced age or my 20-plus years of experience as a teacher. I'm not sure which. But I do think that if we are going to have intercession, it needs to be fully funded. Many children need transportation provided, and there are expenses attached to those things. We can't just say, oh, we're going to have intercession, schools do what you can about that. You know, I just, I want everything to be meaningful and planned. I would also, as a teacher, like to know what professional development is planned for these extra days that people can now take advantage of in the summer. Many professional development opportunities that we have, you know, in our very fine system already. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Chris Moth. I'm a parent at JT Moore Middle School, where we're troubled by an achievement gap that we're, when the balanced calendar was originally proposed, I was quite supportive of it, but then, as you were, when there was no funding for the program we're all looking for for our kids that have risk. I hope as you consider this question in the calendar, you'll really think about the issue of sort of homeschooling, for lack of a better word, a hot-button idea, but it's really something I think most metro parents are involved in with their children, certainly at my house. You know, I reported in a recent board meeting that 95% of Algebra I students at JT Moore in 6th, 7th grade scored 95% proficient and advanced in Algebra I relative to the state, scoring only 62%. And how fascinating that was, and I haven't had a chance to tell you a little of the backstory, which was, the course was a tough slog. We all worked very, very hard, and I remember talking to so many parents through the course of the work, how is your kid's doing? What are you, what kind of tutoring on is going on at home? We had a, we had a meeting at the school after the course ended to discuss what it all meant, this 95% result, and I asked, in the course of that discussion, how many of us here spend at least 30 minutes a week with our kids in tutoring? And every hand went up. So my point is that this summer is a wonderful time for us parents to extend this homeschooling model. I just took my kids to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, so they could see the Civil War through the lens of the North, shall we say. And other experiences like that will improve scores down the stretch, and I hope you'll, you'll keep that in mind as you, as you consider the summer, because gosh, it sure feels rushed to try and fit in swim team, educational events, information technology camp, and all these other kinds of things. Clearly, we have a majority of the kids in our school system who are not at grade level, and I appreciate the work you're, you're doing for them. I work with a child in elementary school who knew only of their housing project, the school bus, and that elementary school. We have a lot of kids like that in Nashville who need programs that intercession should be able to offer. So I'd like to suggest, if not beg, that we consider moving to a model where kids who are behind or not at grade level can come back to school August 1st, even make it mandatory. Spend the $20 million. I think you're on the right track. And I think if we, if we package it that way as almost sort of a summer school, if you will, a special tutoring session, intensive work, longer days, or maybe have them enroll in a charter school, we'll be addressing this problem of kids who are below grade level directly. And I think, I'd like to ask you, do you think the state would go for funding it? I mean, we have some very strange sort of ideas coming from our straight legislature, but I have to believe that even Senator Campfield would go for spending $20 million if it meant bringing kids back into school who need it more. So that's my question. Thank you.
No comment about state funding.
Hi, my name's Sydney Pritchard. Um, I don't like the mic. I think it's kind of interesting hearing everybody's opinion on it. I'm a student, so I think it's also, I haven't actually heard any students comment on it because I participated in intercession last year when I was in school. I was part of a finance class. I was part of a finance class, a women's finance class, and it was pretty cool during intercession, but I do kind of agree with the whole, if we're going to have intercession, it kind of works better if everybody's participating in it, whether it's to advance in their classes or just to get more out of going, because like I had a really good experience when I participated in it. And also regarding the whole two weeks versus one week of intercession and/or spring. Kind of for it, because of the general fact that I'm a student and going back and forth, I kind of, I don't feel the same, I guess, decline in momentum as of starting, taking a two-week break and then coming back, because we're in it, and it's kind of, as you're going through it, you kind of slowly, you slowly almost seem to lose momentum, because you're doing the same thing constantly. Well, not necessarily the same thing, but you're going over the stuff day after day, and it's tiring, and it takes a thing, it takes, I guess, in a sense, it's almost stressful, and it also, it takes, it's, it's tiring for the student themselves. And so I kind of, I, I'm for the two-week break, because of the general fact that not only can you participate in intercession if you choose to do so, and if it's properly done, but you get a break, a mental break, from having to go into school day after day. It's not, so for some people, it might be a loss of momentum, but I think as far as students go, it's almost like a refresher or a reefer, that hey, we're going to have two weeks, like, because when I was in school, we were looking forward to that two-week break. We had teachers that were looking forward to that two-week break, because after that two-week break, we came back and we're like, hey, we're ready to do this. We've had a break. We're not tiredly sitting in the class day after day getting the same thing and not having a break or reliever, because, and then also regarding the whole student employment thing, or youth employment. I have a job both summer and, summer and during the school year, and so I think it's certain places do have the whole, you only work during the summer, but also certain places, if you look into it, it's year-round that you have a job. Like, I had a job all this, last year, and it's, it's, I think, if you look into it, it could possibly, like, it's not just three months and then you're done, as far as the whole job thing goes. Close to three minutes or, okay, cool. And so I'm just, I'm for the two-week break, just because of the general fact that it is a stress reliever, and I don't think you necessarily, in certain age groups, I think you might lose momentum with the two-week break, but I don't think it's necessarily towards all age groups, because I think you kind of have to look at not just the elementary K group losing momentum, but all 12 grades, well, technically K and pre-K too, but all 12 grades and how it's going to affect all of us, because of the general fact that, like, I think I'm for the break, just because of the general fact that it is a stress reliever, and I think when you come back, like, you're, you're fresh, like, it's not as big a task as them. Okay?
Thank you very much. So just, just a quick comment, a response. One of the things that we look at when we try to, try to see if there are some measures or some objective results or changes, something that we really can't tell yet with one year, but we look for how many, we look for attendance. And frankly, our attendance is very good in our school system, grades K through 12. It's in the 94% range, even in high schools, which is 3% or 4% higher than what you see in a lot of places. And we really couldn't detect that much difference in attendance, but the other thing we look for is behavior-related issues. And does that break? Nine weeks on and two weeks off, does that help? We don't really have our data compiled for last year yet. We can't really, can't really tell what that is. I know in a system where I had intercession for a while in another state years ago, we could, after three years, see a measurable difference in behavior problems. So, so, so that still remains to be seen as we move into another year. Yes?
I'm Laura Rose. This is my 14th year. I'm entering my 14th year as an MNPS parent. I have children at HUMFOG and at MEGS, and they did lose momentum. I actually asked them on my way over here, how, how do you want me to sum that up? My fifth grader, my last year's fifth grader, was approaching TCAPs, definitely felt a drop off, particularly in the things that you need a lot of rote kind of practicing, like math. And my daughter, as a sophomore, was taking pre-calculus, and they definitely lost ground after that. I think part of the consideration needs to be for the kids who aren't going to qualify for any kind of intercession. Yeah, I could have paid a couple of hundred dollars and had them take piano or one other thing. That really wasn't a good option for us, and so it was a two-week break. I, I, my children are there for academics, they're not really there for breaks, and it, it did slow them down, and I think their teachers, certainly the pre-calculus teacher would agree, that, that over the two weeks in the spring, it was a, it was a catch-up period when we got back, and that sort of, to me, right there defeats the purpose. If you're taking kids who were doing fine and actually making them do worse right then, that's a huge mark against it, especially if it's not counterbalanced by taking kids who weren't doing well and seeing that they're doing better, which as I understand it, some of the schools are seeing data already that's bad after this past year. So if scores are dropping and other kids are, who were doing fine or now not doing fine, that, that seems to be a big mark against it. I would put in my, I wrote a couple of my, I wrote my school board reps as well. I really think summer school needs to be rethought and revamped. It was always an option when we were growing up, and it was an option up until, I think, several years ago, not just for high schoolers. And I think that if there are kids who are losing too much knowledge over the summer, whether you bring them back in August or whether you bring them back into the school building, say for two weeks in early July, just to break up that 10 weeks, or eight week, or nine weeks, if you could break it up somehow other than bringing 85,000 children back into the school in August, only to turn them out of school again in the spring and the fall. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Cindy Walker. I'm a mother of a fifth grader and an eighth grader at, we're going, we're starting ahead, and we're at MLK. I just wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity to present feedback on these, well, it was three calendar options, but one has already been removed. I just really would like to be able to have our summers back. Summer is a time for students to gain valuable, real-world experience that can't be taught in school. As students get jobs, they learn the value of the dollar, the benefits of a strong work ethic, the satisfaction of earning a wage, the financial complexities of government taxation and regulation, and the responsibility to their employer. If they enroll in summer sport activities, they learn the benefit of deliberate practice, the delayed gratification of perseverance, the commitment and responsibility to a team, and the attitudes of gracious winners and losers. None of these critical life skills can be taught in the classroom. Moreover, the balanced calendar will prevent students from participating in these activities. By going to the balanced calendar, the school board and metro government are robbing parents of the opportunity to teach their children life coping skills, which is unacceptable. Parents, not the government, best teach these values and life skills. And these values and life skills take long, sustained experiences, traditional summer breaks, to learn best. We contend that there are other, more important, non-academic lessons for students to learn, and the balanced calendar prohibits these critical learning opportunities. This is the reason we adhere to the agrarian calendar. Do we really want students graduating from high school having never worked a day in their life? What kind of message does that send to our youth? I would like to propose an option four, the traditional calendar. Have school start on Thursday, August 14th, which takes only the days, the eight days from intercession back and put it at the beginning of the summer, or at the beginning of August. With this option, we will only have one week for spring break and fall break, and probably most people would give up the week of fall break so that they could get out before Memorial Day. This past May was my child's first time to take spring exams. Spring fever was in full bloom at my house. It was all I could do to get her to sit still to try to study. I don't know how the kids are going to take exams after Memorial Day. Option two is ask them for $20 million, and as you've already said, there's no funding for intercession, so how can we possibly fund that? Anyway, please don't vote for any of the balanced calendar options, and please consider the traditional calendar.
Hi, my name is Sandra Polton-Beld. I am the mother of an eight-year-old exceptional ed student at Westmead and the wife of a, the honors chem and AP chem teacher at MLK. Both of us are in favor of the balanced calendar with intercession. One, because my son did participate in intercession. He didn't in the fall, he did in the spring. They didn't offer it in the fall at his school, because things didn't get going. But in the spring, he learned things that he had been struggling with all year, and mastered goals that had been on his IEP for two years that he was not able to. I mean, it was invaluable. Part of the reason I think it was invaluable was because the way they taught was not the way they taught during the regular school year. It was a very different way of teaching. It wasn't teaching to the test, it wasn't teaching to the TCAP, it wasn't any of that. It was fun. He loved going to school those four days. On the flip side, for my husband as a teacher, in the fall, he got to perform AP chemistry labs that he couldn't do during the full school day, because they're four and five hours long, and the, the only other option is to do those on Saturdays. And if you want to see parents mad, ask them to bring their kid in on a Saturday to do a five-hour lab. I mean, it's just not going to happen. In the spring, he was able to administer a practice AP exam in real-world settings, and then he did that on Monday, and then they went over it for the next four days. He got his AP exam results back. It was the first year they've ever had to offer two classes of AP chemistry at MLK. He doubled the size, it was his second year teaching there. He got 13 fives out of the students that took it. He also got 11 ones, eight of those were seniors. Talk about senioritis. So, you know, there's a flip, a flip on that. I just think it works. It works from the standpoint of, as a teacher, you know you're going to be nine weeks on, two weeks off. You have control over how you plan your schedule and how you plan your teaching schedule. As a graduate of HUMFOG, I know full well that my calculus teacher would never have let us lose momentum. There was no way Mrs. Wagster was going to let us do that. It's just, it's in a matter of thinking and a matter of adjusting. And when I see how it helps the students and how it helps them take breaks, and how it helps my husband as a teacher, because he was refreshed and rejuvenated and excited to go back, it just made for a better experience for both him and his students. Now, his population is a little different. I do think the way you can improve on it is the communication about it. We got, I got my letter saying my, my son was qualified for intercession two days before intercession started. Parents have to plan. If they don't know well in advance, they're going to jump on the first thing, because they got to have two weeks covered. We work. We got to have care for our kids. We should know the day we, we should know the day we go back, what's for intercession, not two weeks before intercession starts.
Thank you. So let me, let me say for the telephone poll, we will poll, we'll have data available for the board from a teacher poll. All teachers will have an opportunity to let us know what they think, and of course, parents as a whole. So we'll have two really good data points there. We're actually, on that, on that call-out, and I'm saying that for your husband, but, but on our call-out, we're actually going to do a pre-call to notify people that the call's coming a day or two later, I think probably on a weekend, and we're probably looking at the first week, second week of school. And then, and then the call-out will come, so be, be aware of that. And hopefully, you know, we had a few examples of missed calls last year, but we really had very good results last year when, or two years ago when we did this. Other comments?
My name is Gretchen Horner. I have three kids. I graduated senior and two girls at J.T. Moore Middle School. And so I don't actually have a comment, I have a question. Is that?
Sure.
Is that good? Okay.
I can answer that.
Okay. Well, and, and so it doesn't deal with the whole starting ending, but it does deal with the calendar. And one of the things that I noticed, I think when my son, who now has graduated, maybe when he was in kindergarten or first grade, we tied spring break to Easter. We got away from that, and it was the third week in March every year. So my question is, why did we get away from that again? I thought that worked great. Teachers could rely on a spring break, they knew it wasn't based on the solar equinox or, you know, whatever.
Several reasons. We had two years in a row of really bad weather in the winter, which significantly shortened the third grading period. One year, the third grading period ended up being 39 days, and the last grading period ended up being 51. So that, that, when you put it at the midpoint, you're, you're unaware of what our inclement weather situation's going to be. Also, it depends on when Easter falls. If we can include the Friday of, the Good Friday in with spring break, and it, it's not too late to, to do that in the, in the spring, then that's what we try to do. It's really a board decision. Board can decide when they want it, we make recommendations, then they can do what they want to do.
Well, so over like a 20-year period, how many, did that only happen two times that we had that happen? And so we've got a knee-jerk reaction to that? Or is this a pattern that over, you see what I'm saying? I ran into one of our teachers over the summer, and, I mean, he told me that basically, he just, there was no learning that happened in May. Like, he had to have everything done, because of a two-week spring break, because of a late spring break, because everybody's teaching for TCAPs. I mean, our school year is now skewed, so we've got this long, you know, sort of winter, and then everything is bam, one right after another, you've got a two-week spring. There's not enough time in that last period of school to get everything done. We teach to the test in this school system, which is a whole nother issue that I won't get into, but, so we teach to the test. So our TCAP scores, that's what everybody's focused on, teaching to the, you know, making sure we pass those TCAPs. So once that, you know, everybody's cramming that in, when you've got a late spring break, now you've added a whole extra week, so it's a two-week spring break, you really disrupt that whole second semester of the year. It takes that whole fourth quarter, and that becomes a testing period. It doesn't become a period of learning at all. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. I'm sorry, that, that's how it feels.
Thank you, yeah.
Do you have a comment about that?
No, I don't. I don't, I don't really agree with you on that. What, what's really important is that we not waste the month of May. And I'll, I'll add a little bit more to Larry's response on, on Easter with, with an identified testing window that we have now. There's only a certain period of time when we have to test, and actually, the tests, we're going to test more, not less. The PARC assessment that comes with Common Core will be more testing for more kids. And so when you have a, when, when you tie, when you tie spring break to Easter, it can float all over the place.
Right.
It can be way in advance, or it can be right against a testing window. And so, so identifying a spring break away from Easter gives us an opportunity to, to create more balance. I think there's one other point.
Well, but that's what I'm for.
If I may answer, there's one other point about, about, about balancing the calendar that I think's really important. Someone earlier suggested an August 13th start time, I think. One, one thing that we really try to do is get, is balance first semester and second semester. You know, ideally, you'd like to have 90 days in each, and getting 90 days in before the winter break, it's very difficult to do if you get past August 6th. And so, so, you know, we're looking at a calendar there that lets us get 90 days in, exams before the winter break, and then hopefully, close to 90 days after.
And I think maybe I misunderstood you, because you said that if you didn't tie spring break to Easter, if you just planned it based on the schedule, that that would allow you more ability to, you know, to do your testing, but that's not what your schedule is. So am I misunderstanding something?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say that. What it does is it allow, it allows us to be consistent with where we place spring break and so that we can plan.
So are you saying that it is a good thing? That we tie it to Easter?
So I'm saying that it's not a good thing. It's not a, not a good thing to let spring break float over a two-and-a-half-month period of time.
And yet, that's what we're doing?
No, we're not. Yeah.
Well, that's what both of, I mean, this year, last year, this year, and next year, so.
If we can tie into it and it makes sense calendar-wise, we do that. If it doesn't, then we displace it.
I'm Greg Walker. I have two kids in public schools, and I'm perfectly committed to the public schooling system here. I've got two points that I'd like to make about the, the argument that you made about the shorter summer. The research that I've read really has to do with year-round schooling, not this balanced calendar, extended-year calendar. And the literature says over and over again that the loss is very quick and that it levels off after a short period of time. So, just by changing the summer a little bit, or just changing the calendar a little bit, really shouldn't have any effect. Students will still have that loss when they come back to school. The other point I'd like to make is that all the literature says that when you do these changes in calendars, you absolutely have to accompany these changes with curriculum development, with cooperation with government, with cooperation with community to get community buy-in with parents and teachers, and otherwise, it'll fail. And in fact, in Chattanooga, where you implemented a balanced calendar, or not a balanced calendar, a year-round schooling, they've gone back to a traditional calendar because they didn't meet their academic goals and because they didn't get parental buy-in. So, what are you going to do in order to get parent buy-in, to get teacher buy-in, to make sure that we have the curriculum changes that we have to have in order to make sure this works? And how can we, how can we know that this is going to have any effect at all?
Well, in the, in the first place, Chattanooga's not a good comparison. There were a couple of schools that wanted to do it on their own, so it was school-specific and not district-specific, and it only lasted a couple of years, I think. And if they went to year-round, if they went to balanced calendar in the district as a whole, that was after I left. I did it, I allowed a couple of schools to do that, so.
Can I interject there?
So, not a good, not a good comparison there. I did, I did it on a broader scale in North Carolina when I was a superintendent there, and that's where the data that I'm using came from.
Well, the North Carolina was success because, at least as I understand it, there was a significant teacher improvement. And that was a very successful program, and you ought to be commended for that particular program. But as far as I understand it, there wasn't a real significant change in the calendar and that all the changes, all the benefits could be mapped to teacher improvement. Is that right?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. That's, that's when I had, that's in the early 90s. That's when I had black hair.
My name is Vanessa Stacy. I have a coming, starting sixth grader at MEGS. What I've noticed, I fought intercession last time, as probably everybody knows, because I didn't think it was organized. There was no plan. There was no funding. The kids that you wanted to come to intercession were not going to come to intercession because there was no food and no transportation. We run a babysitting service with a restaurant. And until you get the students that come for the food and the transportation and the babysitting to buy into wanting an education, you're going to fail. My daughter is an A student at MEGS. She is like a rubber band, and if you keep pushing her and pushing her and pushing her, she's going to explode and her numbers will go down. By May 1st last year, she was done. She was finished. She wasn't going to do anything else. She didn't care anymore. She didn't care to the point that she took grading for success seriously, and she didn't do her work. So, I took her to the zoo, and we sat down and talked about it and, you know, tried to work it through and told her it wasn't that important. You, you talk about statistics. You talk about numbers and how you can raise your numbers. There are children involved here. There are children that care. There are children that are going to change the world, and she's one of them. She cares so much. We got a letter for parent-teacher conference. We didn't qualify. Are you kidding me? Because she has As, the computer system sent out a letter saying she didn't qualify? This is a child who would break down into tears in class because she didn't know something. She is a student. She is not a number. She doesn't go there for food. She doesn't go there for care. She goes there to learn. She can bubble, she can bubble till the end of time. She will get advanced on her TCAP. She can fill in little circles. You can test her every week. Most weeks, she had substitute teachers because her teachers were in meetings, diversity meetings, anger management meetings, IEP meetings. I want quality education. I don't want quantity of days. I want my child to have a teacher in the classroom that really cares, that is there to teach, not to have a parent-teacher conference with the kids that are struggling. My child needed one. If I wanted one, I had to organize it on a different day. It's not, it's, it's important to understand that there are children involved. She learns more in the summer because she's not learning in the summer for a test. She's learning. She's thinking. She sits down and not in an electric babysitter, and she writes, underlines words in books so that she can learn. So, I think you have to start thinking of them as children.
I am Beth Vernon, and I have two children currently in public schools here in Nashville. And, you know, just sitting back and listening, I think so many of us probably came here today with, you know, this is my idea, and I want to make sure it's heard, and this is what I think. And I'm not going to say I don't still believe what I came here to say, but I try to take into consideration this lady who, who has a husband that's a teacher and kids and all the elements here. And I think what might, what I would very much like to be considered is, does it have to be black and white, all one way or all the other? It seems like if intercession is working for some children, I think your son may have benefited because you're the type of parent that's going to take your child. So, you would probably be the type of parent that would take him if intercession was early August as well. But when you have a lot of parents that just want another week with their kid, where they're not going to swimming and activities, and they just want to be a family, I think that's extremely important. If there was data to show us that we were all doing so remarkably well, otherwise, we wouldn't even be here, have this conversation. So, maybe considering one week of spring break with a couple of days of intercession, one week in fall break with a couple of days of intercession would be something that, you know, we all, as, as adults, children, everyone, we all come together and say, let's try to find a happy medium. And maybe that's what we could try to do from this. I think going back to school August 1st from August 16th is a radical change. I know it is in my life and my household. My child's blessed to be in our magnet schools, and by the time, you know, I really felt it this year with the TCAP testing and everything falling right there at the end of the year. This gentleman that's sitting beside me was talking about, as a student, by the time May rolls around, and we can all relate, by the time May rolls around, you've got a week or 10 days of school. It's all you can do to focus. So, I think putting so much pressure late in the school year like that with a TCAP, the two weeks of spring break only adds to it. So, perhaps fall has two, spring has one. Perhaps they each have one week of break. I just would like it to be considered, all of us want the same, which is our kids to do better in school. And if intercession helps, great, but let's not do something for the masses that only a few would benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ann Donanzio. I have four children, a junior at Hume-Fog, twins at MLK, and a seventh grader at JT Moore. Again, I want to, I want every child in this system to rise up and do well. However, I feel like intercession and this new balanced calendar focuses only on certain groups. And again, I'm wondering why we don't look at summer school, why we don't look at mandatory summer school, mandatory intercession for these kids, and again, start at August 1st and let these other children who really don't need it, let them come later so that teachers can focus on these children that have these specific needs and work with them and not have to work across the board with very diverse learning groups. As a parent of children who have taken exams, I am extremely concerned about the fact that exams this year will be after Memorial Day. After they've already had TCAPs, they've had EOCs, and they've had AP exams, they are exhausted mentally and physically. And I think we take away that, that three-day weekend, I know for my children, will be spent studying for exams and more, more stress than they already have at this point. So, I hope you will consider looking at a different type of calendar. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Erica Lanier, and I have two daughters in metro schools. One, you've actually heard from tonight. She's a rising sophomore at Hume-Fog and a fourth grader at Jones-Pedaya. I see both sides of the coin. As, as sometimes, I would love to spend more time with my daughter because in a very short time, she'll be going away from college, and that time will be lost. They're also dazed that I might go, please. But I think, let me first of all say that in terms of intercession, we've got to bring in full community support for that to work because we're living in very tight times, and there's a very real probability that we may not get 2 million, 20 million to fund the 180 days. But should our children have to suffer? I go back to it takes a village to raise a child. So, we've got to embrace everyone and think outside the box and be creative on how intercession can be beneficial in reaching those children who won't get it because they qualify for a federal grant, because they're in our bottom-five performing schools. As I listen to everyone in this room and the people who I've just had general conversations with since this whole discussion came up with educators, elected officials, lay leaders, people within the community, parents, I think in essence, to piggyback somewhat off of one of the other parents said, what we've got to consider is the greater good. And if we consider and focus on the greater good, we can't go wrong with these kids. Because as I feel the pain of a lot of these parents here, I know for the most part, our children will be okay. Because whereas we're not in our houses of worship, where I should be, forgive me, my pastor, if you're looking, we're going to be there to support our children. But I also think of that large percentage of our district that is not discussed and is not represented here tonight for whatever reason. We live in a district of 72% free and reduced lunch. And my concern is the children who don't have a voice, don't have the support, and don't have the opportunities. I think about those children who the only time they have a decent meal is when they're in school. I think about those students that are left at home and with longer summers are becoming wards of the juvenile system. I think of those children that are losing both English language, both, both the learning from them going back to speaking their native tongues. You're going to hit me. Okay. In essence, let's think outside of the box, outside of our kids, and think about the greater good because ultimately, all 81,000 of these kids are either going to be our next generation of success stories or statistics.
I have two children that will start sixth and eighth grade. I really appreciate the opportunity of Dr. Regis, Regis, listening to parents directly. I, I would, I would like, I mean, my children still have several years ahead of them before they graduate. I would like to try to plan for the future, how is this discussion going to look like in three years, in five years? Because my, my kids will still be in school. Again, I appreciate the opportunity of having the director of schools and 20-something parents. All the parents in this room want to be good parents, but I hear to Ms. Lanier, and the other side of the coin for me is that we have to be also good citizens. And she already mentioned some of the realities of our district. I would like to propose, I know it's too late for this year, but maybe for this, for next year, there should be, there should be intermediaries in this conversation. And I deeply believe that those intermediaries should be the principals. The principals are the leaders of each school. They understand better than any single parent the reality of what they call their children. They really care. They really care. They care about the 600, 2,000, whatever number of children are under their principalship. I really, that is a disappointment for me, that they are not part, they are not, they don't have leadership roles in this discussion. One principal can summarize better than 20-something parents what is going on in his or her school. And I believe that three or four years from now, they should be the ones uniting the voices so that we end up with the best calendar that, that we can afford. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Edens. I have two children in the McGavitt Cluster. I want to echo his comment about principals. I know we have a lot of great principals. There's, there's one sitting right over there in this school system who really do care for our children. I also want to recognize the, the hard work and leadership that this school board and yourself and your staff put forth every year to improve our school system. And clearly, change is difficult. It's difficult across the board, and improvement often requires change, changing the status quo, going against the culture of, of the norm. And I think that's, that's something that's, that's hard for parents to embrace or to even understand sometimes. I, I would posit that there are probably many parents in this system that didn't even realize that we had a balanced calendar change this past year, but they might realize that something is different. They don't know what to call it, but they might be experiencing some success in some parts. I think this conversation was had in earnest with your staff and, and the community last year, moving us to try this balanced calendar. I appreciate your transparency in allowing parents to come tonight and express their opinions on how that's working for them. I think the transparency is, is the strongest asset that you could have as a school director. And so, that's why you're having this meeting tonight. It'd be very easy just to make a ruling and say, this is what we're doing. So, thank you for that opportunity. I do think it would be a mistake to, to change your resolve only one year into such a big decision. I think looking at the research across the board shows that, that real change takes, is a time, takes process. Something like this may take more than one year. I would just urge you to continue to look at the data that, that you seem to do so, so often, and to make sure that a change like this is having an effect and to be able to tell us and show us as parents in the community clearly what that effect was. And I think that'll help us to understand it better and for those of us who have difficulty supporting it to understand who is benefiting from that. So, those are my comments tonight, and I thank you for your efforts.
I want to, if anyone else wants to speak, please come on up, but I'll, I'll conclude. It looks like we've heard good voice. I want to thank all of you for being here, for sharing your ideas with us. Again, let me encourage you to watch for and listen for the poll, and I think that's very important. Dottie, I'm not going to ask you to come up here and speak to the balanced calendar. That would not be fair. But I, I will say that the, the greatest concern that our principals have had is, has been having that extra planning responsibility and the lack of funding. And if, and I think the, the biggest negative for balanced calendar has been the intercession. And I understand what you're saying about not having a place. And, and from my perspective, intercession has got to be more narrowly focused as we go forward. I would like to serve our exceptional children, and I would like to do some other things there that if we can't serve 20 or 30 children. And I would like to do some other things there that if we can't serve 20,000 or 30,000, how can we target a population there? So I think that's just a little bit of feedback on principals' perspective. That's the biggest challenge that they've seen with it. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Kristin Self and I've got two kids that, I've got a kindergartner and a rising fourth grader. So we're new to the system. But I'm a former school teacher. My mom's a former school teacher. We've, I, I get, I get a lot about improving achievement and whatnot. I guess one of my main concerns is, is that we keep talking about budgeting issues. And one of the plans includes a $20 million increase. And right now, you're already talking about not having funding for intercession. But yet, you're looking at an additional 20 million for an additional, basically, five days of instruction for our kids. I'm concerned about that. One is a taxpayer. And secondly, just to add the additional school days. Not only are we going to be in school longer, but you're going to take out whatever breaks that we do have. So the kids who actually had a break and said, hey, this is wonderful for us, you're going to keep them in school and keep them in school with maybe not as much progress as, as what you may see. The other thing that I would like to see is that, like some of the parents have talked about, is ending after Memorial Day. I think even with my young kids, you're going to see a huge drop from that Monday. What are they going to do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday before they get out of school? I think once TCAPs are over, we all see a drop in participation and what's actually being done in the classroom. And I think those four days are going to be sorely, sorely misused. And probably not a whole lot's going to be done. So if you're going to increase the days, I think that maybe looking at the calendar a little bit differently, maybe like some others have said, during the summers, have those kids, if you're going to increase the funding, go ahead and let those kids who need to be in there during the summer, whether it's summer school, two additional weeks or what, let them go ahead and have that opportunity to increase their achievement. But let us kind of keep our summers. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, let me, let me clarify or specify what we're, what that proposal of extra days is. It's a, it's a, it's an option pending funding. And the reason that it's put on the table at this point in time is that it is all, we, our budgets approved in May or June. We were early this year. We actually found out what our budget was in June. We're now planning year after next. We won't start talking about that budget until well after the first of the year. That, that's a spring decision timeline. And so the reason for, for saying pending funding is that it is an opportunity now for us from now through next funding cycle to talk about a calendar that would add extra time. And, and so if, if you look at the framework of the two calendars that are proposed, the balanced calendar does not cost additional money. The balanced calendar is a cost neutral budget. And if we had support from the mayor and the council to actually add time to the school year and, and workdays for teachers, and that's funded, then the calendar would fit without changing start day and end date and so forth like that. So that's, that's a little bit of that explanation. Now, I, I don't want to, let's not do a back and forth here. But just let me say this. Just let me say this. It is intended, it is intended as an option, very important quotes, pending funding. And, and I think, and I, and I think the, that if, if you look at most of the predominant literature, you know, we have one of the shorter school years in the world of the high-performing districts. And our achievement levels are low. And one variable that we need to take advantage of, a variable, is the variable of time. It, it, it doesn't automatically mean that test scores go up or that we do a better job. So when you vary time, when you add time, when you go to 180 days, as this proposal is, you gotta, you've got to improve instruction. You've got to have quality instruction at the same time. So there aren't any givens there. You know, that, that's, that's really, that's really important to note. But, but I am an advocate. I feel like in Tennessee. So, so let me go back and tell one of my stories in transition in 1996 from North Carolina to Tennessee. I, I moved to Chattanooga to merge the city and the county school systems and, and moved from North Carolina to Tennessee in October. And, and it took me a while to figure out why the calendar was so hard here and why we didn't have sufficient time to do professional development with teachers, to give teachers time to prepare grades, to have parent conferences, to do things like that without cheating kids out of time. And the reason is, teachers in North Carolina have 10 extra workdays. It's a 180-day calendar in North Carolina. It's a 180-day calendar in Tennessee. But teachers in Tennessee have 200 workdays. And, and at that time, teachers in North Carolina had 212. And I'm not sure what it is now. It might be different now. But, but, but that is, that's, that's an important difference. Now, I, I'm an advocate of paying teachers and for us, recruiting the very best ones we can get. And if I can offer teachers an extra 10 days of work, I think that works for us. So, so that's just a, that's just a side effect. And I hope you understand where I am on the variation of time. Do I think that it's something that we can do now? I think it's, I think it's a reach. But folks, I think we have to reach. I think we have to reach further than we are now if we're going to become a highly successful school system with all of our children. And I propose to you that if we develop the right calendar, whether you are, regardless of your socioeconomic status, if that time's planned well and used well, your children benefit all of them. Yes, ma'am? Well, actually, the, that's, that's the awkward, awkward spot that the board's in. And my recommendation would be to, to approve a balanced calendar. And if we can develop funding, or it might take two years or three years to do that. But if we, if we develop funding, then we fit the, fit the extra days in. No, we have, we have a two-week fall break and a two-week spring break. And we will plan intercession activities, but do not expect large numbers of students there. We're, we're changing the structure so that we can do things that were mentioned. You know, the intercession was problematic to us because we couldn't get it planned well enough in advance because, because of the lack of funding. So we'll use the resources that we have to do some things and plan some specific activities. But Don expected to be on a much larger scale than what we had last year. We spent about, we spent about, about $800,000, and I might be off a little bit. We spent about $800,000 on intercession last year. We had originally hoped to spend about 7 million. And that was a loss of federal Title I funding that caused that to happen. That's correct. Not, not, now, we'll ask you the question. Do you prefer a balanced calendar or traditional calendar? So we need, the question needs to be simple. And we're really trying to develop that so that it is. I think the board's asked for that. So yes, the, you know, the, the board makes the final decision.
Based on the fact that the Metro Council did not fund MMPS for this coming school year, all that we wanted, and the odds of it happening again, and you're asking for 20 million, it seems to me that we now only have one calendar option. And that's, so why are we even discussing two options? Because really, there aren't two options. There's the one with the two-week fall break and the two-week spring break. If, you know, you're, I just, it seems like sort of a waste of time to be discussing a $20 million one when Metro couldn't fund us already.
The question on the poll will give you the option and the school board will have the option.
What is the budget for intercession for this year? You said you wanted 7 million and then you ended up spending 800. So what are you going to spend this year?
It would be closer, closer to what we have in the budget this year. On what we can provide. But we also, for intercessions.
So when do you get your federal money? Because this year's school budget's already started.
October.
And intercession is toward the end of October? Intercession's at the very beginning of October?
Principals are asked to do planning. And we, and principals have a Title I budget now. So, so, but, but principals have control over that Title I budget and determine how those funds are used.
So those schools that aren't Title I schools will have no intercession money?
Schools that weren't Title I funds, don't have Title I funds, do have other district funds that apply to that. We just haven't determined an amount at this point in time. We're, we're looking at structuring the intercessions a little differently, as I said before. And the planning's just not complete on that. You're, you know, you're welcome to be critical of that. But understand what I said. It is an awkward change when you go from one calendar to another. We are planning well in advance of budgeted funds. And we need to, and, and I ask you to understand that. And, and, and is a balanced calendar dependent on an intercession? The answer is no. You can have a balanced calendar with or without an intercession. And we're repeating now, we're going around again. I'm going to take your question and then we'll stop.
Well, I think if you have the money for a whole school year, I think those kids that need intercession or summer school or have trouble should come August 1st. And the kids that don't, the kids that go insane by the beginning of May, shouldn't start that early because they need a break. They can't, they can't continue like that. And if you're asking for $21 million, my daughter's at the best middle school in this city. And she had one computer for 25 kids in her classroom. I mean, I think there's a better place for that kind of money if you're going to ask for that kind of money. I think you can, you can spend it on those first two weeks in August or to improve technology. I mean, if the TCAPs are going to be on computer, they better learn how to type. And they can't all share one computer.
Good, good, good comment. Thank you very much. Thank all of you very much for being here this afternoon. We appreciate your input.